Mayor Holston.
Here.
Counselor Forkum.
Here.
Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Berengun.
Here.
Counselor Hadley.
Here.
Counselor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Maxfield, here.
Thank you. Petitions, corrections, and/or adjustments to the agenda. If anybody doesn't have any, I have some. Hold on. Here's your paper. If I get all. Okay, so, on your agenda is 7.1. You are removing 7.1 on the advice of our attorney and upon their request that it not be considered. They have not had enough time to review the potential implications of this contract and advise council that this should not be discussed until they can fully review the documents and issues at hand. So 7.1 is removed. 7.4 is an addition. It is to further our discussion on the complaint against Sarah Altima's Pope. And I have some information that I'll be sharing with you at that time when we get to it. And 7. — never mind, he doesn't know for me on 7.3. Yes, Chris?
7.1, is there any information that the council doesn't know about, the reason why that can't be discussed tonight?
That's only the advice of our attorney. They would ask that they have an opportunity to view. They said they would like to have an opportunity to review all the contracts as they first asked them to do. They haven't had a full opportunity to see all of that paperwork. They would prefer that we wait before we have any discussions about that.
Okay.
A year's not long enough.
I'm sorry, did you have something to say?
Because a year isn't long enough.
We have a new attorney, remember, that we just hired. They want to review those documents and that is appropriate. And I don't know what that sounds like.
It's not appropriate.
Well, if you choose to keep speaking, I'm going to ask you to leave. Public comment is now available. Grab a piece of paper. Items not on the agenda. I have Melissa — Melissa. Berenson. Berenson. Bjornson. Bjornson. Where thought you went, I was 58. You want the — no, I'd rather not. Do you wish to speak at all?
Yes, I'm going to grab my papers.
Okay.
All right. This is a petition I started. I'd like to ask the Oak Ridge City Council to please consider this petition seriously. It was done after something really tragic happened to some of our citizens that we've all been worried is going to happen. Says, "We ask that you terminate the contract with Michael V. Hanson LLC. Enough is enough. The citizens of Oak Ridge are suffering due to decisions made by the interim fire consultant. A family was left to wait for help to come from Eugene Springfield while their 18-month-old was unconscious and unresponsive. There were six volunteers available who were terminated by Hanson and therefore unable to respond. We have tried other ways, begged, pleaded, had meetings both privately and publicly, read letters to council in open session for a year now, and nothing has changed. It's time for the community's voice to be heard. He was absent for the most critical time our town has faced in recent memory, and we got through it. It's time for politics to take a backseat to what is best for this community. No more hand-wringing about the old attorney's bad advice to a now-fired city administrator. The contract is easily terminated and an interim can be appointed. Get him out of town before any more damage is done." I'd like to point out — There's 625 signatures on this petition.
Are these from Oak Ridge?
A majority of them are, but there's also concerned family members. There's a lot of these that their devices must have assigned the location if they didn't change it specifically. If you read through, I'm sure you'll recognize signatures of people that do live here that say, "Other cities." Anyways, whether there's half of them from the city, half of them are outside that have family here that's concerned. There's been a lot of people outside the community following these issues for a long time. I think every voice on here should be considered. 625 is a lot of people, and this is in 10 days. The first 500 was in less than 72 hours. I appreciate consideration.
Next, we have Trudy Hammond. Want the microphone?
Yeah. Mayor, city councilors, and city administrator. This evening, I come to you as a former casse, speaking for our children who cannot speak for themselves, as an advocate for the addicted who may be combative while receiving emergency services paid by taxpayers versus privatization, who could have the right to refuse service imposed. I stand before you while Michael V. Hanson LLC is a contractual hire. As the individual who has called upon our emergency services when my significant other had issues from a brain aneurysm in April of 2018, and there was mass confusion in information upon arrival of EMTs placing blame on 911 dispatch, I was very clear and specific with 911. I myself, a patient at Orky Clinic in August of 2018, was in agreement with the physician to be transported to a hospital from chest discomfort. I had at that time been a controversial debate between fire department personnel. Mr. Hollitt demanded I be transported as recommended by an attending physician to the part-time volunteer, which upon arrival at the hospital, it was determined a potassium transfusion was desperately needed. That volunteer who refused to transport me could have cost me my life. Orky Clinic filed a complaint against the volunteer with Chief Hanson, and nothing came of it. HR being Susan LeDoux makes me wonder why.
Please don't mention our staffing.
I apologize. Retract. I still question why. I received no apology. I am here standing before you with encouragement for a conclusive decision to terminate immediately the contract with Michael Hanson LLC as fire chief and to hire an in-house chief among our current employees of dedicated services to our community. We still have competent fire department employees. It is unknown to me if we have any volunteers currently with all the dismissals. Reports are extremely vague and usually statistical only. I express again with all intent of making this statement impact your decision of not continuing with Hanson LLC's contract. Not just because he was hired under unethical controversies and violations, not just because of personal experience, not just because of public record, including a duty. Mr. Hanson has publicly admitted he has issues with communication. In the latest presentation, he provided city council and public. He also has commute issues, response attendance issues, and emergency situations. Okay, and residencies impedes his ability to leave from Roseburg. He left us all in crisis. It was those who reside here that took the leadership on of rescue, even with those who he terminated. We want them back in-house and in their positions. I hope our community has a say in who becomes our new fire chief. I want someone who demands to save my life. Thank you for your time, listening, and consideration. And thank you, Mr. Hollitt, for saving my life.
Thank you. Next public comment from Jim Coe.
Jim Coe, P.O. Box 122, Buck Ridge. I have here a letter from the State Ethics Board confirming that on their meeting on March 7th, that they did not find cause to proceed with ethics violation against me brought on by Judy Rollin for trying to save Postal Pharmacy and keep it open. So I went up there on March 7th to testify before the commission, and they voted 8-0-1 to terminate this and not go to an investigation. So they had to because, according to the statute, you know, at least have this hearing because according to the statute, I was in violation. I used my office as the mayor to write a letter to Senator Przanski, to Senator Wyden's office, and to Commissioner Williams' office to try and get Trillium to pay their bills, which they weren't doing. So Lori and I live together, so that's why there was a violation. I used my office to promote my household. So anyhow, the letter here, and I'll give a copy to the city because I know CIS had been contacted and vindicated once again. I'm kind of tired of all the harassment that I've received over the last two years. I haven't acquired an attorney, and due to my income, there was no way I could hire one. But, you know, this has been going on for two years now. All the harassment, retaliation of city staff, the former city administrator against me, and I'm just real done with it. So, thank you.
Brett Wilder. My head's breath.
No, I'm good. Hello, everyone. I've never done this before, but. It doesn't hurt. Where do I start? My name is Brett Wilder. I grew up in this community. Moved away after graduation, but came back three years ago. I made a — created a family. I have four children, three are older and special needs on the spectrum. And we have a one-year-old who, I guess, is kind of the — he's part of that petition that was just given out.
Here's Mike.
Want me to? Okay. There we go. Good. I'm here for, just to kind of talk about the emergency services and the fire department. I am — my mother was a volunteer paramedic. My uncle Roger was a volunteer paramedic. They love this community. I love this community. I understand the emergence or the ambulance and it not potentially being able to be there for my son and his need, but volunteers maybe. I was there alone, my wife and child unresponsive in the parking lot of the fire department. That little thing you heard, "Sorry, you dialed the wrong number," that was the response I got when I pushed the button on the door at the fire department calling the ambulance. Happened three times. The dispatcher on the other end couldn't hear me. I couldn't hear her. We decided to stay there. We prayed, and we decided it was the right choice to stay there and wait for help. Would have got to services quicker if we drove. But my wife and I, we stayed out of the politics of it all, and we didn't — we were pretty unbiased. Like I said, I have family that were volunteers. And from what I see, though, there's something that needs to potentially change. There looks to be some people that want their voices heard, and I hope that, you know, my son is okay, but someone might not be. And at least some compassion and some concern, right? Someone that can comfort someone that's in distress. Because I, from what I hear, it sounds like there's plenty of people that would like to volunteer. I'd like to volunteer. I'll look into that more. But, yeah, just want to throw my two cents out there. So leave it at that. Thank you.
And last, well, it's not last, it's Linda. Camera.
Good evening. I'm addressing the council and mayor on this. I bring greetings from the Chamber of Commerce. And I feel a little strange. You have many heavy issues in front of you. But I didn't want to wait any longer to let you know that the chamber has some new board members and that we're planning some new approaches to how we involve ourselves with the city and with the businesses here. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and also invite you to the chamber after hours on April 10th. It will be at Banner Bank between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., and we hope to see you there if you can come. And we'll talk to you more about some of the things that we have planned for this coming year. Thank you.
And I have to say, I haven't attended — I attend the chamber meetings also, and I'll just reiterate. There's a lot of nice, new, wonderful power feeling in there and communication, and they're really excited about what they're doing. So if you think you would like to participate in that and help support our businesses, please do so. And I'm checking off this floor. Hope. How are you?
You know, it's funny, without having spoken to you or anything for a very long time, we're on the — Do I need it?
If you think so.
No. We're on the very similar track tonight. My part would be, let's take a look at ourselves and let you some of the words that were used during the balancing election time and all this that has just passed. Such words, honesty, integrity, transparency. You know, we use these words, and they're meaningful. They have a meaning. There's something to aspire to. We wish our children to be in such matters, in such ways. However, there can be times, and there can be situations, and there can be tugs and taunts that will allow for us in a more, we'll call it discredited view of these words, and use them in a discrediting way. And that's very, very sad. You talk, think first, you know, speak later, sort of. It would be nice if thoughts were brought in more healthy and more binding to the community and focus on issues rather than, you know, "God, what'd you do to your hair, man?" Jesus Christ. Anyway. So there are going to be some serious things coming up. We're going to be challenged by charter change. We're going to be challenged by new directions and things that I have spoken with you about don't necessarily view. But if the matter of focus of realizing that some of these goals aren't really worth putting effort into and giving support, security, I would say mostly to staff. Council is a very political body, but staff has to work very, very hard on things. And they have to iron out so many things before they bring it to the council. So that's about it. I was quite surprised. We're on the same track there. That's very — okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, mayor's comments, announcements, or propositions. I don't really have too many. Let's just move into the business from the city council.
I have something.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I want to actually go back to Brett over here. I think that's a really big deal. He waited at the fire station with a baby outside the door, and nobody responded. And I really think council needs to acknowledge to him what happened. We have an entire room here asking for answers and asking us to make change. We have a petition with 600 names on it, and it's just set up on the desk like it's just a piece of paper, and it's nothing. I don't think it's nothing. I think Brett sat there — I cannot imagine what it's like holding your own child at the door of a fire station, waiting for one person to respond to you, and not one person responded to him. I have been with children like this. I bet Renee and Melissa and Paul and Shane and Scott have all been in this presence before. It's extremely scary. I cannot imagine what it would be like standing there with my own child. So I hope all the councilors here understand what is really going on at the fire station. We get a report from Mr. Hanson with numbers on it that things are going wonderful, but they're not when we have terminations coming out. And the public is demanding for change, and we are sitting here on our hands, and it's very frustrating. I'm very frustrated that Mr. Hanson left Friday without making sure that there was adequate staffing. Calendar was not full. There were not people that showed up and responded on this call. I just want to make sure the councilors understand what happened. Do I have any, Bobby? Do you, I mean, do you understand that nobody responded to this man, this family?
Of course I do. I've been paying attention.
Okay. And Paul and Stan, you guys? I mean, I don't know who's on Facebook, who sees it.
I don't govern by Facebook, but I did go down and talk to.
It's our people, whether it's Facebook or another room. They are our community.
That's for a response.
I was talking to Bobby.
Then I'm doing a response. The response is, is that while I don't govern by Facebook, I did look into the matter directly because of a request that I got from the family. I did go down and talk to the fire chief to find out the information. And I — and I — and I totally understand how awful this is. No one wants anyone in that situation. I think there are a lot of factors that led to that, and a lot of them lay on everyone's shoulders. We are a small rural community. We are always going to have times when there is a perfect storm and things don't work out. And it is up to the fire department to go through, analyze what happened, and figure out where they could have done better, where they should have done better. It is not for me to reach into their inner workings. I would hope that during the emergency services meeting, we can ask those questions, and that is the appropriate time to do them.
What emergency services meeting?
I'm sorry, report that we're about to have.
Okay. So he is actually a contract. He's not an employee, so that makes it different.
Well, it doesn't, to me. I'm still going to ask.
No, it actually does. He's a personal service contract. That makes it different.
I'm going to ask his report.
Okay. But when it's a personal service contract, it's the council responsibility.
No, it is not. And that's why we have that to our attorney, Council Hollitt.
I understand the part about the attorney. I want to make sure the council understands why the community is here with a petition of 600 names on it and why Brett was here. That was my point, making sure that everybody understands what's going on.
I think I can agree with that for myself, but thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Could I address that issue?
You can always address it.
When I was in the fire department in 2000, we had this phone hanging on the outside so we could contact people. And I used to go into the dispatch center. When we changed dispatch to Lane County, then it went to Lane County, but it never worked right. It was always, like Brett said, it was always, he couldn't hear on it. They couldn't hear you very likely. They couldn't hear what he was saying to them. So they couldn't put page out the volunteers. And I think that is a pretty serious issue that's never been fixed as of Scott. Been what, 15 years or something like that? That's a small issue, but we've never addressed that particular issue, and it should be. In this day and age of high technology, we should be able to fix that problem.
Thank you. I absolutely agree. It's surprising that that can go on for 15 years and no one in the fire department did anything about that.
A page still went out to volunteers. They got a page. It's just there's not volunteers to respond. There's only two medical volunteers left that are EMTs or above. That's the problem. It's not that they didn't get the call. So they've been terminated.
Anything else you would like to say before I move forward?
I would just like to say something. I do think it's really important for the council to acknowledge that these things are happening in our community and that we do ask staff to report out on it. And I do feel very strongly that this has not been acknowledged in a timely manner.
So, okay, just a moment. So I do want to just remind both council and the community that in our last meeting in February, we did address this issue. We asked that we be given, that our new attorneys be given a — that they be asked to review the contract, both for its questions about PERS as well as its questions about how the contract was put together and whether it was valid, having never been signed by council or mayor. We, as a council, agreed that we wanted to do that. We also asked that we would receive the information that we have had about PERS and whether or not how it interacts with that contract. We sent, we made a motion to do that. In the ensuing time, we have this snow apocalypse and a city administrator resignation. Those motions still stand, and unless the council has changed their mind about them, they will still be answered. Does council still want those questions answered? And the purpose of that, I believe, was we also asked to see what the ramifications were for getting a interim fire chief and how one would go about that. That also was a discussion we had about the fiscal impact of that. We all nodded our heads and had consensus to that. Is that still what you want to see done? So, Chris?
Don Hadley, Counselor Hadley, also put a motion on the table that the contract be terminated, and that was not put back on the agenda after he did that.
No, it wasn't.
That should have been put back on the agenda as well.
It wasn't seconded.
It was actually, we had a staff member call, point of order on it, and then we said we would discuss it.
And we agreed that we needed to have the input from our new attorneys. I mean, it just, we hadn't even signed the contract yet at that point. So, you know, that is still pending. I guess I'm asking for, to know from council, do you still want that information? Or do you feel you don't need any further information to consider, to consider the contract once we get an opinion from our new attorney?
Yes. Can I explain something?
Yes, go ahead, Don. I hear you.
Oh, okay. I asked for his, his, to be terminated, that contract. And Mr. Messina said he would give the information, and he never did that. It's not the council's fault. It was the city administrator that we had at the time. And if Messina doesn't do it, why should we take the shit now? What's going on? This is wrong.
Well spoken, Mr. Hadley. Thank you.
Just like when you were in the room with me, Kathy, when I was talking to Mr. Messina, you said I would do a hard shot on you because of what I was saying. Whatever thing I said was the truth.
No, I said you beat up on me all the time.
Yeah, that's exactly what you said. But it's not beating up on you. If it's a fact, if it's the truth, it's the truth. It's not picking on you is what is supposed to be said.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand what you're meaning by that, but thank you, Don, for that input. Go ahead, bye.
In asking for our attorneys' legal opinion.
Saying it, if it was said once, so if this can be done again, why can't we have a time limit on it? I want them to take a look at this contract. I'm a dumb shit. I can look at it. It's wrong.
Mr. Hadley, thank you for saying that. And I think that now we have a new city administrator who has been in position for less than 24 hours. I think maybe then we can move forward, and I would ask you not to swear. All right, is there anything else you want to say before we move on?
Can we have a time limit on this? Can we have it done within a week?
No. I, and actually, Mr. Hadley, I can answer that because when I spoke to the attorneys today, they said we have to have time to review the documents, to get the documents, and to look through them.
I understand that. This is the first time where everybody, anybody talks to their attorney. You know, you talked to attorney, Don here, we talked to attorney. Did any other councilor talk to attorneys about this?
They don't have to. We gave them direction to do that, although others have talked to them. So they know they're doing that. They have already made a request of staff for materials to be provided, and they are in the process of doing their duty as our newly, newly chosen attorneys to review documents and to give us an opinion. Is that under, is that?
Local. I don't have a problem with that, so let's follow up with it.
We will. Thank you. Counselor Hollitt.
Can we set an executive session that all of the council is able to sit together with attorneys, talk about all the information that is at hand, that we're all on the same page, and that we have the attorney's opinion?
And I don't disagree with you, Counselor Hollitt, but one of the things that the attorney told me is that that is also what they want to look at to see what areas of concern need to be addressed in executive session and which things do not need to be addressed in executive session. It's important that we delineate that because if we are indeed talking about things that should be in public, we don't want to sequester that. And so they need time to move through and parcel that out. So they are aware of that, and I appreciate that suggestion. Bobby, did you hear Hannah?
Yes. So we've asked our new attorney for their legal opinion. I think it's important to also include CIS in those questions and see if there's anything that they may be concerned about. So I'm hoping that that's been included in that.
I think we can definitely include that with the attorneys and to say, is it appropriate also to ask CIS about any of this and move forward in that way? I don't have any problem with saying that. I know I'm checking in with them, and I should tell you. If at any time they're in this meeting, you feel. If at any time they're in this meeting, you feel like you would like to, to have the attorney listen in, he is more, he is available, we can call him. Um, if we get to that point, although he did set out his caution about what we should and should not talk about, so I just, we're gonna talk. Anyone else? Kristen, did you?
Did the attorney say that we should not talk about the termination for convenience clause in the contract?
He asked us not to talk about any of the contract until they have a chance to review it in its entirety.
Can we set a date that we are going to meet with the attorney and discuss things? Like, Don's talking about a timeframe, this has been going on.
I totally agree with that, however, I really need, I think in all fairness, we should be able to ask the attorney, what do you believe the timeline should be? Because they are gonna have to review it, and come to the point where they're comfortable with giving us intelligent answers and decisions. So, uh, you know, I can, I can definitely call them and ask if we can get them on, in, onto an April meeting, or even hold a special meeting if indeed they're through, and indicate that there is a timeliness issue. Um, we would like to have this much sooner than later, so that we can put some issues to rest for our community. And, um, that is really important, to do that for all of our council.
I would agree to that.
Yes, Marcia?
Um, Mayor and Councilor, um, Hollis, I just wanted to say too, that I think that the city attorneys, because they are brand new, they have asked us for a bunch of information that we need to get to them too, so there is a, uh, we will need to kinda gather all that information, get that to them, and then have the conversation about how soon they can set up a meeting. But I think we, we are all in agreement that we, we do need to, we need to move forward.
Do you wanna hear this, Marcia, tell everybody?
Oh, I, I will, you know, um, thanks, Patch. Um, audience, our new city administrator is Marcia Knowles.
Interim.
Interim.
Just to be clear. Thank you, thank you.
I would like to say that no one person can provide a hundred percent protection to anybody all the time. And no one person can receive protection one hundred percent of the time. But we cannot try.
Quickly? Yes. Um, with all due respect, the contract's eight pages, so this attorney's part of their work there, so they should be, you know, quickly. But, what I wanted to say was, I listened to the last meeting in February, and Bobby's motion was a little concerning, because she said, ask the attorneys if the contract violates hers. I don't think the contract is the issue.
I think they understand the larger, and, and I appreciate your question, because we have to be careful about the way we say things, but I don't think they're looking at it in just very narrow terms. The conversation, well, did you have a conversation with them? Because I did, so that, with the attorneys. And they understand that there's a broad, a broad look that we wanna take at it, not just in pieces.
So, but I've been to that. Present at meetings where people end at home versus anywhere, that's the only thing I say.
Well, I don't have crystal ball, so I don't know what they're gonna do, so we'll see what happens here. Bye.
And I, I do believe that the attorney knows what the intent is, and that they will look at it.
I do too. Councilor Hollis?
Can, uh, myself and Councilor Maxfield be present when you contact the attorney?
I don't see a reason why you need to be, but if you want to, that's fine.
I would like to, yeah, the three of us, if we could be there while you call the attorney to.
That's fine, I'll let you know when I'm making it, and if you can be present.
That would be awesome.
Do so, I will not be in the office tomorrow, well, that's not true.
That's fine.
I don't know when I'll be in the office, maybe tomorrow, I have basketball, I'm going to go see basketball. Okay, so, let's move forward. We have, uh, consideration of appointment to the audit committee? Here we go. We have, um, one application. You know, they, yeah, so the charter makes out that we, um, a member of the budget committee must sit on the audit committee. So, uh, we have one applicant, that's Dawn Kingian, and she is on the budget committee, and she has, um, applied to be on the audit committee. And, um, I would be happy to, to entertain a motion. Thank you.
Um, I move that we appoint Dawn Kingian to serve in the vacant audit committee position for a two-year term.
Any further discussion? Jackie, would you toggle?
Councilor Hadley?
Councilor Hadley?
Did we lose him?
Councilor Hollis?
Hi.
Councilor Barronpoint?
I'm getting on.
Dawn? We're in the middle, um, so we, you're getting in at a lot of delay?
Yes, yes, I am.
So was that a yes?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
I'm out of the hospital now, but I'm at home, and I just have a reason why I can't come down here tonight.
That's fine.
But I'll be there from now on.
That's fine, Mr. Hadley.
Councilor Barronpoint?
Aye.
Councilor Forkum?
Aye.
Councilor Maxfield?
Aye.
Councilor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Passes, Don, thank you for your service. Oh, yes.
Um, I think you forgot to add to vote on the two, um, applications you have for the budget committee. During additions.
Okay, can we do that next? So we've got the audit done, that would do, but thank you for your reminder. Um, I think they passed it out to you. We have two applicants for the budget committee, and the budget committee is now, uh, is too short. So that works out perfectly. We have, yes.
How many terms are these positions?
You know, I think Priscilla Davidson's would be new, she's currently on the budget committee, it was expiring, so hers would be continuing on for, I believe they're up to your permission. The other one, I have to look and see which ones left open, because we had some that ended, and we have some people that were on it that left. So we'll see where they fill in, hers will be filling in the one she currently has for another term. The other one may be a full term, might be a part term.
So you let us, I mean, we'll go ahead and vote on that, if the applicants are okay with that, and then we will get back to them and let you know, Chris.
Well, can we ask the applicants, maybe they only wanna do one term, or maybe one of them would have a preference to have the shorter or longer term?
Okay, so there is, there is two, and one of, one will be longer than the other.
I'm not sure, I haven't looked, I know, I know Priscilla's is a full and new ended, I haven't looked at the other one that's left open.
Okay, so Melissa and Priscilla, um, if you, um, are interested in the shorter term, if there is a shorter term, would one of you prefer that?
Doesn't matter to me.
Either one's fine. Which one? Okay, shorter one, Melissa or Priscilla? Awesome, okay, so, we have both of them applying to the budget committee. Can I have a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint Priscilla Davidson and Melissa Bjarnson to the budget committee.
Awesome, Bobby seconded that. Any further discussion? Will you follow up with Jackie?
Councilor Whitney?
Aye.
Councilor Maxfield?
Aye.
Councilor Hollis?
Aye.
Councilor Forkum?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councilor Hadley?
Aye.
Councilor Barronpoint?
Aye.
Thank you very much for volunteering for the auspicious committee. We look forward to having you. Uh, let's see, seeing the hiring process, I just wanted to give a, a brief report and also ask, um, uh, some people in the council. So we are currently at seven, um, applicants, I am not going to share their names with you, um, but they are from all over, responding this way. Um, so, um, that's good. Uh, it closes on the April fifteenth, or fourteenth, uh, so we still have two more weeks to go for applications. I would ask that council, if, um, if you agree to, uh, think of two individuals in the community that you would like to add to the, the application review and, um, and interview, uh, group. Uh, and if you wouldn't mind sending that to the city administrator, and along with, uh, why you believe that person would be a great addition for this. Um, we wanna make sure that we have a review, uh, committee who can look at the applications, and then also, um, look at those that meet the, meet the cut a little more thoroughly.
I wondered who else is gonna be on that, um, subcommittee, if you wanna call it that? Cause I think at one time.
On the review, application review process?
You mentioned at one time that the administration committee was gonna be part of that, and I wondered if that's still true?
Yes, that is still true.
Okay.
That is still true, and, um, I may be a little ahead of myself, because I should have reached out to you guys and, and talked to you about that too. Um, but expect to hear from me in the first of the week, I wanna go through the interview process and see with admin whether that jives with what you're thinking.
Okay.
Um, so, do those public entities, cause I'm thinking superintendent would be a great person. Yeah, any, any, doesn't.
Okay.
I just didn't know they were already a good person. Um, so I, I think that is a good question, I mean, we're willing for those, but I'd still like to see what your, what your thoughts are. Audi, go ahead.
I can volunteer for it.
Thank you for your volunteering, however, that's not what I asked. But, my guess is you will be on a list.
Before this closes, I want to say.
Please ask to be represented. Okay.
I want to say that I admire.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Don.
I would like to see Don Criss on that.
Okay, well, send me an email. Thank you.
Okay, I'll send an email for him, and I also would like to see Dockery.
Don.
Get Dockery.
And I think that's a great addition too, send me an email. Or send the city administrator an email, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mary Anderson, and I'd like to say to Chrissy, I admire your address of acknowledgement to the townships agreements, according to your stewardship.
Thank you.
Interrupted by frogs, I must, I must say that that was, uh, I think it's interrupted by. Say it's Toodle, is that what it is? All right, let's move on to the emergency services.
Kathy, I have one more question, that's okay, I'm way down at the end.
That's okay.
Does council, is council involved on the interview group for the, I'm sorry, the review group for the applications?
The initial review group, looking over all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Marcia, what do you think?
Well, I guess it, it depends on how many we get, but, um, certainly, we want the council as involved as possible. I mean, um, so we will probably come back with, uh, when we know the actual numbers. Come back to council with, um, with the numbers, and a, you know, a draft of the process. And, um, and then we'll kind of, you know, make those decisions with you.
Okay.
But I know you'd like to be, you'd like to be.
I think most of the, from what I'm hearing from most of the council, I think everybody wants to be involved. I mean, I'm hearing, seeing that Bobby's nodding her head that she wants to be involved, I know Tricia does, I know you.
I think we should let them say that, but.
But I, I'm just saying I saw their heads nod, so.
Well, so let's ask them all, how do you feel about that?
I absolutely want to be involved.
Me too.
Paul, Dan? Okay.
So, no, absolutely, I too wanna be involved, so.
Yeah, it's a big decision.
My bottom half also.
Mayor, I'm mad, opened my mouth again.
Oh, of course you did.
Having been involved in hiring the last city administrator, like you kind of, you're going kind of sideways on your process, so council actually approves the petition, but we didn't do that. The council approves your city administrator, but we had a screening committee that screened all the applicants down to a certain number, and then presented those to, to the council for final approval.
Okay, so your screening committee actually didn't include council? They screened and then gave the results of that screen to council to review?
It kinda kept the council on one side, so that they didn't have any bias or all that kind of stuff.
Interesting, okay.
It also didn't give them a whole bunch of people that they had to look at, they just kept a few.
And I believe, Don, Don, didn't you say something to me a while back about there is an ORS about the process? Am I remembering something different?
Um, there's a lot of ORSs. I don't remember if I.
It seems like you said something about that.
I feel like I did too, cause I had read it.
So it's something we will wanna look into, and we, Marcia and I will definitely look at that and, um, get any input, so that when we do come to you and say this is a process we'd like to use, and how do you wanna tweak it? This is what we've done in the past, we'll have something to talk about, Bobby.
And I can absolutely see what he is saying, because you have to look at export a compact, and how that could be perceived, so I think it is really important to get that information.
And I think maybe some of that has to do with how many we receive, I think last time you had over fifty.
I had sixty.
You had sixty. So, um, yeah.
We got it down to fifteen, and then we got the fifteen with the screen, and then we got it down to five, and that's the ones that we interviewed and presented to the council.
Well, I'm excited about this, I'm excited about moving forward, it's really nice to see the applications come in, I gotta tell you, it's, it's kinda cool. I kinda just briefly look at the names and put them in the file, and, um, it's, uh, it's kick, I must say. Because I know it's going to result in an awesome hire. Okay, emergency services report.
Counsel, um, yeah, your report in front of you, I'm not gonna really go through this, other than to point out a couple of things is, uh, during this storm, our crews responded to eighty-five nine-one-one calls in that period of time. They handled every one of them, there was two calls that they were not able to get to because of the snow, uh, but we did have crew members available to go. Um, I'd like to talk to Brett shortly, and I hope the little one's doing well, and I'm sorry that, uh, the situation happened the way it did. Uh, look, and it was a Sunday, not a Friday, by the way, Counselor. To give you a little idea of what took place on that day, uh, first off, the last, the first, our new schedule has been in play for eight months. That Sunday was the first time that we've actually had to use Eugene to come up and, um, transport, and they actually came up twice on that day. The crew on duty, uh, there was the full time and the part time. Um, they, we, they had a transport earlier in the morning. Knew that we were short or had no volunteers available, had another call, Eugene came up and transported that one. About three o'clock or three thirty, I know exactly the time, uh, we got requests for a mutual aid call, which was up on the hill, which was a medical aid, typically those calls are gonna take four to five hours. Unfortunately for your family, the officer, uh, decided to go, um, and that left our city unprotected. One of the things in a mutual aid agreement is that if responding to another agency on a mutual aid, if that leaves your aid, your city unprotected, you don't go. And that actually happened to us on the Friday before that, when we had the fatal fire, um, up on High Prairie. Dexter, uh, which was actually an automatic aid, um, said that they couldn't go because they could not protect. They didn't have enough people to respond to our call, and still keep the people in, in their town. So unfortunately, your call was the fourth call of the day, doesn't make it feel any better or any correct, right? Uh, when we talk about, um, not covering our town, our town is covered, and you have examples of the last, um, at least the month you have there, where our volunteers that we do have, and our paid staff, and our part-time personnel are doing a very good job in covering the area that we're covering with the resources that we have. Again, it's unfortunate for, uh, your situation, and, uh, hopefully that never happens again. Uh, one of the things that we did is to make sure that all of our paid staff, uh, reviewed the mutual aid agreement, which has been in place for quite a few years, and remind them that mutual aid is just that, they're asking for requests, but we gotta take care of home first. And if meeting on a mutual aid agreement for a mutual aid call leaves us open, then unfortunately we would not respond to that, so.
Thank you, Chief.
I, I'm gonna ask them to just report, and I'm gonna take any comments right now, but we don't have to comment at the end.
I actually have one. Um, you said that I said Friday, and actually what I said about old Friday was that I felt that you shouldn't have left Friday as a management standpoint, if you know that the, the staffing wasn't adequately covered on Saturday, Sunday.
Well, actually, the reports.
Actually, I'm not finished speaking, I was given the calendar by the crew there, and they told me that the calendar was really, really, um, not covered for the month. And they pointed out that there wasn't staffing covered that weekend, and that you left on Friday without assuring that there was coverage. And so that is why I brought up Friday, I do realize that the call happened on Sunday, because I have spoke with the family.
Chief, pardon?
Mayor, council, and citizens, uh, the February two thousand nineteen report you guys have in front of you, and I'll verbalize it for the citizens. We had five hundred twenty-four calls for service, which related to the thirty-eight major case reports. Uh, that's not a true number, because our computers were down during the, I was gonna call it the winter storm event, but the mayor, so I can't call it, what we've been calling it's snow apocalypse. So there's a lot of calls from the.
So there's a lot of calls from the time when our computers were out that aren't, kind of there and where Sergeant McPherson was actually trying to audit those through dispatch and all the ones that came. Because we had a lot of calls actually come in through word of mouth. So we're trying to get, backtrack all those now. Myself, Officer Clemm and Officer Miller attended child death investigation training at Kids First Eugene. It's not a fun class to go to, but it's, we do that every couple of years to research on that. And then just a quick briefing on the double homicide. It would have, could have possibly been actually a triple homicide. On February eighth, two thousand nineteen, approximately two thirty-nine PM, an officer from the Oak Ridge Police Department responded to a suspicious conditions call on the forty-seven hundred block of West Second Street in Oak Ridge. Upon the officer's arrival, he contacted the suspect, was armed with a knife and ultimately placed her into custody. Upon obtaining additional information, officers checked the area and located two deceased, a male and a female. Investigators from the Oak Ridge Police Department, Lane County Sheriff's Office, Oregon State Police, and Lane County Medical Examiner's Office all responded and conducted an investigation. As a result of this investigation, the suspect was arrested and ultimately charged with the crimes of aggravated murder times two, aggravated murder, attempted murder. And the subject is lodged in the Lane County Jail awaiting trial. We had some busy times during that. For a department our size, even with the help, even for our county our size, that's a major case that takes a lot of pieces to go together to work through. But we got through it and hopefully the families are healing. I've, myself and several officers have been in touch with the family members to try to help them through. During snowpocalypse, our officers and staff, I believe, went beyond the call of duty. We handled all of our unfortunate calls for service and all the Lane County Sheriff's, I won't say all, but almost all the Lane County Sheriff's Office calls for service because there was no deputies up here. We performed hundreds of welfare checks and humanitarian calls. The officers and staff worked long hours serving their community. I just want to bring out a couple of people. Neil Ritz and Valerie Miller are both reserves for us and they worked a lot of hours and they do that for free. There's no stipend or no extra money. They work for free. And so if you see them, give them a pat on the back because they're just citizens like everybody else that work in police departments from time to time and that's, you know, not only they're missing, Neil could have gone to work a couple of days and he didn't. He stayed and worked to help our community. And not just that, but they're away from their families too when they're helping and they're doing it for free. And I also want to bring out all the volunteers that helped us all over the place because it was just, a lot of people came together and did a great, great job. There's always some misgivings in it, but I, and then I really want to note who I think is the rock stars of the whole thing and it's not people that any, our city or even citizens thinks about, that's our public works people. Our public works guys, they, I mean, they don't have the glamorous, we go save people's lives too often, but they're a piece of public safety because they got to keep our water flowing and our sewer flowing and they did a lot of helping on the police department out and the fire department, getting logs cut and stuff moved and stuff plowed. And so if you see public works guys, they're really the guys that get forgot, so please give them a pat on the back. Because they did, they went above and beyond as well as the emergency service people and they just did an awesome job. So, that's all I have.
Counsel, I want to ask if in your emails, you received a copy of the letter from Lady Cox to the Oregon Bar? I don't know if you got it or not. Okay, I'm going to forward that to you because I noticed that it was Council CC and I don't know if you got it. I know I got it, so I will forward that on to you. So, and I'm also going to, we feel pass this down to everyone. This is a draft of a letter that I sent out and put together for Sarah Altimus Pope from city and, from council and mayor. If you would take the time to review that and then get back to me if you have any changes. If once I hear from all of you, and there is a timeliness issue here, if once I hear from all of you, then I will produce a final and ask that you each come into City Hall at some time and sign it. I'll make it available for you. So the letter from Lady Cox to the bar is on March seventh, two thousand nineteen. A complaint against Sarah Altimus Pope was filed with the Oregon State Bar by Susan Leduke on behalf of the city of Oak Ridge. I write to inform that the Oregon State Bar that this complaint was not approved by the city of Oak Ridge and further that Ms. Leduke does not have the authority to speak for the city in this matter. March fourteenth, twenty eighteen, the city council of Oak Ridge unanimously voted to withdraw the complaint filed and to direct the city attorney to inform the Oregon State Bar. I therefore write to request that the city of Oak Ridge be withdrawn from the above-mentioned complaint. That's signed, Lady Cox. I have one of those back. Thank you. So that public knows what I passed out. Mayor and city council of Oak Ridge, Oregon, wish to express to you our sincerest apology, this was addressed to Sarah, for the complaint that was filed against you on March seventh with the Oregon State Bar. The complaint was done without knowledge or approval by council and mayor. As an elected body, we wish to express our appreciation to you for the service you performed during our recently declared disaster and find it reprehensible that the city of Oak Ridge's name was used without proper authority in a way to harm you. As you know, we have directed our city attorney, Lady Cox, to send a letter to the Oregon State Bar requesting that the city of Oak Ridge be withdrawn from the complaint. Our preference would have been that this complaint be withdrawn in its entirety and we were dismayed to learn that that would not be possible. Instead, our attorney requested that the city of Oak Ridge's name be removed from the complaint. Thank you, Sarah, for your privilege to the community. It is our hope and desire that there will be no negative impact to you personally or professionally from this unauthorized action. So if you'll get back to me about changes or whatever, and then we'll get a final out to her.
Thank you for writing that. We are welcome.
Thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome. Any other further business from the public? Yes?
I just want to say thank you to the police department for getting my neighbor to the fire department for oxygen. She had, they had been fixing their meals on the propane outside and not but two minutes later their awning had collapsed when she was charging her portable oxygen in her car. And that transport to the fire department for that oxygen was vital and I just thank you so much.
Audi?
Audi's played off. Four seven five eight seven, dollar road. I wonder, I don't know if it's appropriate right now to say this, but I do have a complaint. You probably should have put it on paper.
There is a complaint process and you're welcome to come into City Hall.
But I just wanted to make the chief aware that his people that come and took me to the hospital, they couldn't, there was two people in the back. Neither one of them could draw blood for me. And I've had no problems, reference back here to Scott when he took me in one time. I mean, this ambulance, they rock and roll. He bam, wham, it was done. I've had no problems down to clinics or anywhere else. But that, maybe that may be something that the chief should look into.
Yeah, I have not moved.
Your time's up, Audi.
And, you know, maybe that might be something that the chief should look into is make sure that they know how to draw blood and, you know.
So are you wanting to, if you want to put in a complaint where we can convey that concern also?
Okay, I can do that too. Thank you. I just wanted to make him aware of what's going on right now.
Thank you, Audi. Counsel, any further? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.